To start the recording. Good evening, everyone. Micah, welcome you to the Gig Harbor City Council Meeting of Monday, March 27th, 2023. Time is 5:31 PM. And I will do a roll call from my far left, Councilmember Wook.
Here.
Councilmember Storset.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Lykins.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
And Councilmember Barber.
Here.
All right, welcome, everybody. If you would please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Before we begin this council meeting, we would like to recognize that we are gathered on not only the ancestral and traditional lands of the Skobopsh Band of the Pialup Tribe of Indians, but also on the site of one of the largest and longest standing historic villages of their people, the original inhabitants of the Gig Harbor area. Counsel, are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. You have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Any abstain? Okay, motion passes six one. Thank you, counsel. Uh, we will move on to the mayor's report. Um, I was very pleased to be one of a, one of five panelists at a women's luncheon um on Wednesday. And this was for female leadership edu- uh educators in leadership in a vast number of school districts, I don't even actually remember how many were represented at this luncheon. It was um put on by WASA, which I will completely get this wrong if I try to say what that acronym is, but I think it's, it's Washington Association of, I think it's superintendents and just school leadership. I know that sounds terrible. I should have written this down, but I did not. Um, anyway, it was, it was really wonderful um to talk about being a female leader in Gig Harbor. Um, I was there with Miriam Batson, the president of our chamber. I was there with uh Creston Barr Superintendent. She actually was the one that put this together and invited us. Um, Jennifer Stiefel was on the panel um as a local business owner and Lisa Christensen, who is um uh with the Norwegian consulate. And anyway, it was just wonderful, wonderful to be there and share about how we're working together uh in leadership for the benefit of our schools, for the benefit of, benefit of our businesses and our community. So really thankful that they allowed me to come and share my story of how I got to where I am today and um it was an honor. So just really happy to do that. And learn from some amazing leaders of the Stillicum School District who were the other panel, um all women, and they were just phenomenal. So it was, it was wonderful. Um, I will turn it over to our city administrator Katrina Knutson for her report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. Uh, three items this evening. First, I wanted to let you and the community know that I was um honored to attend the opioid, Pierce County Opioid Summit last week. It was held in, at the Pierce County or excuse me, Pualip Pavilion. There were hundreds of um folks there from local policymakers, medical providers, other service providers, talking about what Pierce County and the state have done for uh to try to prevent opioid addictions in our community and all of the work that needs to be done still. Um, I was a little bit shocked to learn a lot of information about opioid um and opioid overdoses that I personally was not aware of. And I think that um we could, I say the collective we as government could do potentially better job of explaining this to our communities and just how impactful it is. But uh in the last year, more than a hundred and ten people died of opioid overdose in the United States. And twenty-five-hundred people died of opioid overdose in Washington State. Um, and so this is a large problem that um the county is looking to partner with uh all local cities, service providers, medical providers. Uh, to continue to try to solve this problem. The featured speakers were Dr. Anthony Chen. I learned he is retiring, so we'll be looking for a new um person to head up the Pierce County Health Department. Also, Pierce County Councilmember Jenny Hitchen was there. Um, I believe she's a new council member with Robin Denson, and she was very well spoken and in with a particular interest in this as well. And uh Tacoma Councilmember John Heinz and Behavioral Health Policy Coordinator Elizabeth Allen. And so there will be a call to action for um cities to become involved in a opioid task force in which we will all, they're asking us to align potentially utilizing opioid settlement funds, which we will have to talk about further um with the council as we'll be having some additional funds coming our way. But I did want to let you know and share the hope in that, that there are a lot of people that care and are working to solve this um horrible problem in our community and um I do believe that because of this, a lot of good work will be done and hopefully prevent future um people from becoming addicted to opioids. Um, on a bit of good news, want to commend Chief Kelly Bucy, Carrie Ann Eckberg of the Downtown Waterfront Alliance and the chambers Miriam Batson. Uh, they met last week to discuss a Gig Harbor Crime Prevention Summit in which the city and chamber and Downtown Waterfront Alliance will be inviting folks to come here, our local businesses and talk about crime prevention strategies. So it's really taking a very proactive approach in uh helping businesses help themselves and help our police department to prevent crime in our community. And that information will be put out very soon. And lastly, another one involving the police department. I know on our Facebook page it was said, but uh, March 23rd and 24th, our police department had a special um emphasis on thefts and burglaries in our local businesses. And twenty-three people were arrested for theft and robbery. And because of this work, um over thirty-five-hundred dollars in merchandise was recovered for these local businesses. And so I just want to thank uh Chief Kelly Bucy and his team for helping our community to be safer and to feel more safe. Um, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, do we know how many of the folks that were arrested went to actual jail?
Uh, one or two.
Would you like to?
We'll have the chief answer your question, Councilmember Wook.
One or two. Um, theft third is a misdemeanor, so we generally cite and release misdemeanors. Jail's not accepting them right now.
Okay.
Um, there was at least one felony uh, the robbery charge, and so they went to jail.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes, thank you. I was wondering on the um opioid discussion, did they talk anything about some of the new drugs that are being laced with the fentanyl that are extremely dangerous? And I, and I think that even some of those may not have Narcan, uh might not be successful in stopping an overdose. Did, I was just curious if they spoke about that.
They did, and there's going to be a large uh education campaign, especially toward youth who may think that Narcan will work if they were to take something that was laced. I'm, I'm new to this world of this language, so I apologize if I misspeak. Um, but yes, there is their call, it's a certain type of, I believe, horse tranquilizer that is being laced with the fentanyl. And Narcan is not working for those. And so there is education campaign that's going out warning people even further about that, but um it, it's unfortunate, but that's the truth.
Yeah, it, I, I appreciate that. I think the more that we can help with education on all of that, and I have a thimbleful at best on this just from a previous life, but this unfortunately touches everyone, every race, every ethnicity, every economic group. I mean, it does not pick its people. It is across the board in all of us. And I think it was a hundred and ten thousand people that um had overdosed, if I heard you correctly, throughout the US. And those are the ones that we know of. I'm sure it's probably very underreported, unfortunately, and it is an epidemic for this entire country. So I look forward to hearing about more information and how we can help support what it is that we can do as a city to help support that work in education. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. I do know that the police department is becoming trained in Narcan deployment. I don't know if that's what they call it, but the uh Key Peninsula Gig Harbor Homeless Coalition is also going to be giving free training on how to utilize Narcan. And so we're looking at having that at the civic center as well. And I'll make sure that the council members receive that invite so that you are able to attend and learn yourself.
Thank you so much, um, City Administrator Knutson for attending that and for keeping on top of all of this. Um, it's a lot, and I know that it'll help significantly when we have our H3 person, our Housing Health and Human Services person onboard to kind of take the reins on some of this. But in the interim, thank you for doing that and for learning about all of this so that we can keep our community safe. Appreciate it. And thank you to Chief Bucy for all of your work and the department's work in what you're doing for our businesses, for our community in general, for our schools, just keeping us safe even within the constraints that you're working in. So appreciate all of you very much. I will now open up public comment on non-agenda items only. So if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on an item not on the agenda tonight, you can come forward. And if not, um, looking at the attendees, you can press star nine on your phone if you're dialing in to raise your hand, or you can press the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment on non-agenda items. And we will go right into our first item of new business, which is our Public Works Construction Contract Award for Public Works Operations Center Building. And um, there are several motions um on here for specifically. Um, so I'm going to turn it right over to our Public Works Director Jeff Langham for his report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, counsel. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Uh, as you know, the scope of this project uh has, has been around for a while. Um, we are finally at a stage where we're looking to award a construction contract for the building itself. The building is proposed to be a fifty-five-hundred square foot operations center for our operations division. Um, it's going to be placed on a building pad that was constructed back in 2019, I believe, uh, as part of the site development work that was completed. We originally bid this project in July of 2022. Uh, but the one bid that we received exceeded the uh amount budgeted by quite a bit. And so the city council adopted a resolution rejecting the bid. And we revised the scope slightly, made some modifications to a mezzanine technically. Um, and then uh put the back out to bid in February of this year. Um, the construction cost estimate at the time of bidding was right around three point six million. We fortunately uh received five bids uh on March 9th. That's when the bids were due. And we opened the bid, opened the bids, and the bid tab is provided or bid summary is provided in your agenda bill. As you can see, uh, five bidders, uh Peas and Sons was the apparent low bidder at three point seven million roughly and change. And so we're looking to, and that's the first motion of uh, of the suggested motion here. We have, as Mayor said, more motions. We have three total. We put these together as a package because it's essentially, we do all or none. Uh, that's why we put all four motions onto the same agenda bill. Um, I'm just going to speak to one other motion, the second one to execute construction support services with Lawhead Architects. Um, I know that dollar amount might seem kind of high, two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars. Um, we request scopes and fees from consultants to construction management services at the uh, the greatest extent that they think they can, uh, they would be needed throughout construction of the project. Um, these contracts are time and materials contracts with amounts not to exceed. Um, I did go back just real quick uh to, for my own edification and to let counsel know. Uh, since 2016, out of all the construction uh support services contracts that we've uh executed here at the city, we've never spent one hundred percent of the contract. On average, we spend about fifty percent of construction materi- or construction support services contracts because we have a lot of in-house staff that can do a lot of what consultants would otherwise do. So whenever we have staff available, we always put staff on that work. And so um, the only, the greatest amount we've ever spent on a project for construction support since 2016 was ninety-four percent. So um, I don't anticipate, long way of saying, I don't anticipate us spending all of that, two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars, but uh, it's there if we need it. So that's my report. Happy to talk about the other two motions if you'd like, but uh, that's a quick summary of what we have.
Great, thank you. Um, I will open it up for clarifying questions from counsel. Councilmember Martin.
Yeah, hi Jeff. Hey, on the motion number four, for um authorizing the engineer, uh, city engineer for an order authority an amount not to exceed two-hundred-thousand. In your prior work on things, and I don't want to slow down progress for you by any stretch, is there an amount of that two-hundred-thousand, say if something, one item was maybe fifty-thousand, could we discuss it at a work session without unnecessarily burdening the process and slowing down the construction process? Um, knowing that you have a total of two-hundred-thousand, if I'm reading this motion correctly. But if there's any one kind of large amount that we have an option to just have you brief us on that first?
Um, we could. Uh, you, you're right uh that it is usually time critical on a lot of these change orders. Um, we usually brief the city administrator on any change order that comes forward that's of any value other than just very minor. But we could ha- brief the entire council through a study session through an email or something uh or at a city council meeting if there's one that's timely. We, this, this dollar amount actually is a little lower than we usually, we usually like to go about ten percent of the contract amount. Um, but we just didn't think it was appropriate. And again, you look back at our change order uh authority history and we don't spend all of the change order authority that we're granted anyway, but uh, but we can, if you would like us to uh have reports, either like I said, through the city administrator, through email, through study session, through council meetings.
Well, perhaps email might be just good, just as a heads up saying, here's what we see instead of a such, you know, again, I don't want to slow down things and we can get a contractor and we can get them on, onsite, start doing the work. I think that's great, but maybe something in, I don't know, in excess of twenty-five-thousand dollars at a time, just to kind of let us know what's occurring out there perhaps and why is all I, all I would ask for.
Yeah, we can work on a way to inform counsel of, of things like that over twenty-five-thousand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so Director Langham, thanks. Um, can you kind of briefly give us a little bit of the timeline when we're going to start construction and how long it's going to be? Then the second question is, I assume that the um construction contract oversight will be, include also field visits as well as doing submittal reviews as well?
It uh, I'll start off the schedule.
Yeah.
Uh, so there is a long lead time, as many of you probably know, on some of these HVAC items and other items. Um, we, I've already talked to the contractor, the contractor uh that Peas and Sons representatives said that if they are awarded the contract, they would be ready to go soon. So um, I hope that they, we can get this executed at least very soon. But we will need to go through the processes, we'll need to go through the submittal reviews and everything else. Um, we intend to break ground um in a month or so, month and a half. Um, but uh, it's really dependent on their schedule. At the pre-construction meeting, we're going to receive a schedule from them. The contract documents do say, I believe the number was two-hundred working days. So uh, that's less than a full calendar year. So we anticipate that we, if we're able to award it or have it executed very soon, uh, then, and the contract documents do say we need to execute a contract within fourteen days of award. So to, again, I think those are working days. So yeah, that means that within two weeks, we'll have this executed and they'll be underway. We can schedule a pre-construction meeting. So we, we expect it will be done. A long way of saying, we expect to be done within this time next year. Your second, can you repeat your second wish?
Oh, just on the scope of work for the uh construction oversight, they're going to be doing field visits and submittal reviews, at least the ones that your folks can do by themselves?
Yes, we do do a lot of those ourselves. Again, the scope of work for Lawhead includes them doing quite a bit of submittal review, but after we get through submittals, we don't anticipate there will be very much more work for them to do other than an occasional site visit. They need to be there for, there's a lot of work that they're going to have to do when the you, building is complete and they go out and they do all the testing to um, confirm that everything's operational HVAC lighting and all that. Uh, so they'll come out for that. Um, but we, we have construction supervisor Jake Nelson, who's going to be inspecting it. Uh, George Flanagan, he's in our water department, is a field supervisor, but he's very familiar with the site. He's going to be the operations representative. So um, I think that we'll have along with Dean. Uh, he's a senior engineer, is going to be the project manager. So uh, I think that we're going to have a lot of good staff and Marie's, Marie is a, a great uh administrative assistant for capital projects. Um, so she's already ready to go with all of this. I think it's going to be minimal work for Lawhead and Associates and our staff will be able to handle quite a bit of it.
Sounds like a fun project for you.
Yes.
About time, right?
Yes.
So excited. Um, any other clarifying questions from counsel? Okay, I will open up public comment on this agenda item. Uh, if you're in the audience and you'd like to speak on this item, you can come forward. Or if you're in our online audience, you can press star nine on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your uh Zoom screen. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and open it up for counsel deliberation. Uh, Councilmember Wook.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a long time coming, and I think we're going to have a whole lot of happy operational employees when that comes to fruition. It's going to be efficient, it's going to be safe, it's going to take better care of our employees and our equipment. So um, I move to execute the construction contract with Peas and Sons Incorporated in the amount of three million, seven-hundred-seventeen-thousand, six dollars and twenty-one cents. You want me to do all four of these at the same time?
Yes, please.
Okay. And number two, to execute the construction support services contract with Lawhead Architects in the amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, two-hundred-eighteen dollars and sixty-five cents. Three, execute the materials testing services contract with construction testing laboratories in the amount of nineteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-four dollars. And four, authorize the city engineer change order authority in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-thousand dollars.
Very well done. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
I know, I feel like we should stand up and cheer. Yay. All right, moving right along to our second new business item. This is a professional services contract with Granicus LLC. And this report comes to us from our senior planner, Jeremy Hammer. Welcome, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mayor. Carl gets settled here.
And Carl DeCimas, our community development director.
All right, good evening, counsel. The professional services contract that we have before you this evening comes in response to direction given to staff at the February 27th council hearing. Uh, as per the motion to approve ordinance fifteen oh seven related to short-term rentals that evening, staff was directed to hire a consultant to further study short-term rentals and provide counsel with regular updates. Early on in the process of researching short-term rentals, city staff reached out to and heard presentations from a variety of consultants which specialized in tracking and or developing regulations for short-term rentals. Following counsel's direction, staff revisited some of the materials we had received from these consultants. Um, after review of those materials, an additional presentation and some discussion, staff decided on Granicus as the consultant to assist us with our research efforts. Staff felt uh that their services best suited, suited the objectives of this research. They demonstrated expertise and knowledge of the issues surrounding short-term rentals. And they're accompanied with uh experience working with multiple jurisdictions uh locally. The proposal, uh, which is shown as exhibit A of the professional services contract in the agenda bill is made up of two services. The first is their address identification service, uh, which is a automated monitoring of sixty-plus STR listing websites or what we have defined as platforms in our codes section. Uh, listings within the city limits are identified and screenshotted uh and information is extracted from those listings. Uh, Granicus, through a combination of AI and human analysts, then utilizes publicly available information. Uh, it's real estate listings, county assessor data and similar uh public records to identify the exact addresses and owner information for each STR. Uh, the data and screenshots uh of all the listings are made available to authorized users, uh, city staff and an online dashboard and record uh management system uh, which is set up and maintained by Granicus. The data will be updated regularly uh every three to five days, they've indicated. And city will have the ability to export all records um to Excel as we choose. Uh, from that, we will be able to report the findings as needed to counsel. Uh, the second of the services is the rental activity monitoring, uh, which they utilize data from the uh previously mentioned address identification service. And they're able to provide information uh for the frequency a listing is rented out and estimates for lodging taxes uh being collected from these listings. So that'll give us a better idea of uh how much lodging tax uh of the total amount that the city receives comes specifically from short-term rentals. Uh, with that data uh that we expect to collect from the two services, we will gain a better understanding of the number of short-term rentals operating within the city. And areas where they're concentrated and types of dwelling units utilized. Uh, Granicus previously indicated to us that uh, as of March uh 2022, there were fifty-six listings. And then seventy plus is what they've mentioned uh in October of 2022. So we anticipate a more detailed breakdown of these numbers after the data is collected. Uh, not sure if there were uh some redundancies there, and I believe lift boards are counted with that. So as we continue to move forward with our new permitting process, we can uh look at uh, look at that data and also look at the percentage of rentals that have obtained permits to date and help guide uh code enforcement efforts. Uh, so in short, this is uh information that will help us make informed decisions regarding the regulation of short-term rentals in our community. Uh, as noted in the proposal, the setup and configuration of the online dashboard as well as online training for staff is included as part of that fee. Uh, and that breaks down as six-thousand-two-hundred-and-twelve dollars and seventy cents for the address identification service. Uh, one-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and seventy cents for the rental monitoring uh for a total of seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seven dollars and forty cents. And we have noted in the contract that that would be a not to exceed. Uh, so as written, uh, the as written, the professional, the professional services contract is for one year. Uh, so we ask for your authorization of this contract so that we can continue to move forward with this important research. Uh, thank you for your time and consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a, a good start, very good start. I know that one of the things the council had asked at one of our earlier sessions along this STR monitoring was to get an assessment of what kind of housing stock might be lost or is being lost, like a conversion of a long-term rental to a short-term rental.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that part of their scope of work or is that something staff is going to do? Because I didn't see that necessarily in here. It looks like they're going to figure out how many people are applying, where they are, address, uh, number of visits so we can get tax data, but beyond that, uh, didn't see that in there.
Yeah, we believe there would be something we could, uh, data we could get from what uh we received from Granicus. I mean, once we know where these are, we can uh kind of determine what type of units uh the short-term rentals are being held in.
Okay, because I, I think that's kind of a critical piece of data that everybody's, you know, one of the, one of the major uh concerns of folks is that we're losing housing stock for either long-term rentals or for, you know, people buying houses. And so if we don't have that data, it's going to be a tough question to answer later on. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wook.
Yes, thank you. So is any of this information going to be on our website or is this just information for the city?
Uh, thank you. So the uh, the, the data would be
Uh, thank you. So the, uh, the, the data would be, um, housed on the, the current website we have. Um, we're going to work with, uh, Granicus, uh, they provide a, uh, dashboard. Um, and we will work with them to determine what can be public facing and what would just be internal, uh, but the data will be available to the public.
Okay, and, and when do we expect that data to start showing up?
Uh, as soon as we get them. Oh, yeah, that.
Yeah, they indicated it would, uh, the timeframe to get the dashboard, uh, set up and the initial, uh, run of data would be eight to twelve weeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
And we'll also be providing that information to council on a monthly basis that will be public information. So as it updates every three to five days with new, um, STR information, we'll make sure that the council has that um, information and that it's put on the website as well. And, um, council member Henderson, back to, to your point about the housing stock, we know that that is a, a big concern, um, for commenters on this. And it'll be, once we know where the STRs are, we'll be able to know what type of dwelling unit that is and provide that information to council.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I don't see, oh, customer Martin.
Yes, thank you. So you did, you got a contract quicker than two months. So kudos to you. I remember that was your estimate. Way to go. Good job.
Great job, Jim.
Um, secondly, we will get clarification once they're taking a look at all the properties about if any of these are uh, marine vessels or if they're homes and then also confirming that they're actually in the city limits. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council member Barber.
Yes, I'm just wondering, um, how, um, you will cross reference Granicus's information with the information that right now is in the permit portal? I'm assuming that the two of those will be talking because right now you can look to see how many fifteen um, permits have been applied for at this point. And so I, I'm just curious how quickly that will cross reference.
We should quickly be able to compare the addresses we have in the permit portal to what, uh, Granicus is able to provide to us.
Great, thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions from council, I will open up public comment on this agenda item. Um, if you are in the audience and you'd like to speak, you can come forward. And also, uh, in our online audience, you can push star nine if you're listening in on your phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your zoom window. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment on this agenda item and open it up for council deliberation. Council member Barber.
Yes, I'm really excited to move ahead on this part of the project. So I moved to authorize the mayor to execute the professional services contract for assistance with the monitoring and tracking of short term rentals between the city of Gig Harbor and Granicus LLC in the amount not to exceed seven thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and forty cents.
Second. Okay, great. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? All right, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. Thank you very much, Carl and Jeremy, for all your work on this. Okay, moving right along to our third new business item is the authorization to purchase replacement desk phones. I think myself and all of staff will be very happy, we're all very happy this is on here. Um, and this report comes to us from our information services manager, Keith Smith. Hi, Keith, welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council.
We might have to speak a little closer. I know that Matt, that Mike and your mic Katrina are really soft, at least to me, they're soft. Hard to hear you guys. Okay.
How's that?
That's better.
Okay. Uh, the current desk phones, um, they're believed to be twelve to thirteen years old. And they've been failing at an alarming rate for the past four to five years. We have phones with sticky buttons, bad audio quality and randomly dropping calls. We have been refurbishing the phones as best we could over this time period. We've also sent phones off to a third party to repair, um, any issues that we encountered over the years. Whether two of these, uh, actions have become, become unsustainable. So, uh, with that, uh, this agenda, uh, is to, uh, request the purchase of new phones and accessories and also to provide training to staff on how to use the phones.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions from council? Council member Henderson.
Thank you, mayor. Um, I'm assuming these phones are in stock and they can start being put out soon or are we going to have to wait until?
Uh, the estimate that I got from the vendor was, uh, once the order is received, um, it'd take two to four weeks for us to receive them. And once we receive them, we will start to deploy them.
Okay, is there a, a warranty or are they going to be standing by for other stuff in case, you know?
There's, there's a warranty, um, through the, um, vendor that we work with, uh, Tri-Tech. So if we have any phones that are experiencing issues, they will, uh, replace the phones.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other lights on, so I will open up public comment on this agenda item. And again, you can, um, come forward if you're in the audience or you can press star nine if you're listening by phone or the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment and open it up for council deliberation. Council member Martin. I think your microphone might, yeah.
How's that?
That's better.
Now, see, I'm seeing if you could hear me over there. I said, we like to get a hold of you, and I'm sure it's been a challenge from time to time. So I'd like to move forward with a motion to move to authorize a mayor to sign a purchase agreement with Tri-Tech Communications for replacement of desktop phones.
I'll second that.
Great. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts. This has been a, a tough one. Uh, right, moving on to our last new business item, adoption of resolution twelve seventy two, adopting a public participation plan for updating the comprehensive plan. And this report comes to us from our principal planner, Robin Bolster Grant. Welcome.
Thank you.
Carl DeCimas to assist if necessary. Side.
Lovely assistant.
You're a lovely assistant.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mayor Markley. So last month, uh, your council approved the contract with SCJ Alliance, uh, to assist us with the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan periodic update. Uh, we have been in discussions with SCJ about the public engagement portion of this project. Citizen participation is at the very heart of comprehensive planning, informing the goals, objectives, policies and actions that guide the day to day decisions of elected officials and staff. Uh, we are here this evening to present the public participation plan, which is intended to provide the framework for that effort uh, to your council for consideration and hopefully adoption. Uh, the plan provides the objectives, the target audiences, the channels for getting the message out into our community and overcoming barriers to broad participation. We want the largest reach possible, particularly from folks in the community that we don't usually hear from and, and don't necessarily show up at, at hearings like this. Uh, the participation plan includes a general schedule, um, but it's important to keep in mind that this is a, a high level overview, the details about where all of our upcoming events are going to be and the exact dates are still being worked out. Um, but, uh, I can tell you that we are targeting April for the very first large scale public workshop. And again, the details will be forthcoming. Uh, staff is requesting that your council adopt resolution twelve seventy two, adopting the public participation plan for the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan periodic update. I am happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you, I am mistaken. I, this is not our last item. We have one more item after this, so my apologies, everyone. Um, council member Henderson. Oh, were you for, I didn't see how the order of lights. Thank you very much. Council member Barber.
Thank you, council member Henderson. Thank you, mayor. Um, I am just wondering if you could speak at all to the visioning process that we're doing with this because I think it's really important as we begin this process that we know the big picture of where we want to go before we get into the smaller pieces of it. And I understand it's probably in here, it's referenced a couple of times, but if you could provide some more detail there.
My understanding, uh, council member Barber is, the, the visioning comes from our community. And so there are, uh, a number of different events, um, some, uh, individual, uh, reaching out to folks, some of our community leaders, the business community, uh, the, um, schools and, uh, a whole variety of folks out there. Um, once we start to get a sense of what people love, what they don't love, what they want to see changed, then it's, then we're better able and, and more informed to come back and say, this is what we've heard. And then we can target, um, you know, land use, transportation, all the various elements and how they work. But I think the first, uh, goal is to get a broad sense of how people are feeling here in Gig Harbor right now and, and where they see it. We'll hear a lot about, you know, the changes that, that people have seen and, um, ideas that they have, uh, about changing that in a different direction or continuing depending.
Great, so we can probably assume that the April big kickoff event is going to be a lot about some of, a lot about that visioning process of what you like and don't like.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Council member Henderson.
Thank you, mayor. Um, thanks, Rob. A question, I was paging through this and kind of looking for touch points for the city council, and I think I only found one and we're supposed to just approve it. Is there, can you maybe amplify or explain, are there any, are we going to do any of this during in a study session or are we just giving it and then expect to?
Sorry, yeah, I, I would love to, yeah. Uh, again, this is a little higher level than, you know, some of the more granular details. Um, but I would love to get, uh, um, Bill Grimes with SCJ, uh, in front of you, uh, very quickly. Um, perhaps, uh, at the next study session, depending on, uh, uh, on schedules and, and have him, uh, discuss his experience and, and what he brings and, and, um, you can pepper him with questions. He's already, uh, done a, a presentation for the planning commission. Um, so, uh, I'm, I'm very happy to bring him here. And then as we get results from these various outreach events, uh, at, at different milestones, um, you'll be seeing a lot of us. Absolutely. Well, we'll, we'll fill you in.
As long as we're somewhat part of that process as well.
Of course, absolutely.
Thank you, council member look.
Thank you. Uh, will there be, uh, a timeline for those granular details that you called out? Uh, I mean, when do we, will we see a timeline physically, uh, on paper so we can follow along? How will that work?
Uh, I can certainly work that up. Absolutely. I can provide, um, more details as, I mean, it's, I know it seems like this has been something we've been discussing for a really long time. Um, but it's in the last month since we got these folks on contract. Um, we've been talking about the details, the who, where, why. And, um, so I, I will fill in more dates and, and, um, places for the pop ups and, and workshops. I mean, we're going to be a presence at as many different existing events as we can, farmers markets and, and hopefully all over, uh, all over the city. Um, so every time we update that, we'll, we'll provide that and that'll be on our website as well. So, right, which we're also, it's also a work in progress.
Okay.
Um, but we're getting very close. So, so there will be a calendar of events, there will be ways for folks to contact us, email lists, all of that. Um, we are working on all of that, I promise.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Henderson.
Thanks, mayor. Uh, one quick question. Do you, how do you envision them, uh, integrating our other couple of plans that are in process right now, urban forest management plan and our, uh, climate action plan? Are they, are they going to be reaching out to contact the consultants that are doing the work? Or are they going to wait for the consultants to get their product out and then you hand it to them and then they take it from there? Cause I'm not sure whether the timelines are overlapping or whether we're going to still be working on the urban forest management plan by the time they're about ready to wrap this up or vice versa. So.
All of the things that we're working on, including the climate action plan, actually the timing on that is, is kind of perfect. Um, we know that the, the legislature, uh, is moving to, um, have communities either right now, it's not required, but to have an actual separate climate element in our comprehensive plan. So we'll be able to incorporate the policies and, and everything that's developed in, uh, in the cap, uh, into whether it's a standalone element at this point, it really is going to be about timing and, uh, and resources. Um, but we will certainly incorporate all the policies that are, that are developed in all of those plans, including our, our housing, our housing needs assessment, the middle housing, um, all of those policies and everything that's developed, um, that we're working on now will all find a place in various, uh, parts, housing obviously and housing, but also, you know, land use environment. Um, yeah, they'll find a home in, in our new plan.
Great, thank you. I don't see any other questions from council, so I'll open up public comment on this agenda item. If you're in our audience this evening, you can come forward, uh, to speak. And online, I do see one hand raised, it looks like M. Heraney, I don't know if I'm saying that correct, correctly, but, um, you can press star six or unmute yourself. Oh, did they drop off? Okay, I guess they're not on anymore. Um, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine if you're on your phone to speak or the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and open it up for council deliberation. Council member Liggins.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, I move to approve resolution twelve seventy two.
I'll second that.
Okay, great. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. Thank you very much, Robin and Carl. And now we will move on to item five on our list. New business item number five, creative endeavor grant agreements. And this report will come to us from our city clerk, Josh Stucker.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. Um, so this is coming back to you from our discussion at the March sixteenth study session. Uh, we came to council and, uh, presented a proposal to, um, increase the funding amount for the creative endeavor grants from thirty five thousand to fifty thousand this year. Um, this was based on a staff's review of the applications and the recommendations of the arts commission. Um, we found that we had, uh, nearly eighty five thousand dollars in grants that were requested and, um, felt that we could do some good uh, by increasing those amounts. Um, at that study session, we presented you with the table of the recommendations from the arts commission and the increases that were recommended by staff. Um, council reviewed those and gave the green light to bring them here to this meeting to adopt. Um, in the meantime, since then, we've gone back to the arts commission and held a special meeting and, uh, explained the increases that council is preparing to adopt tonight. Um, the arts commission had some concerns, they had some questions. I think we were able to address many of those. Um, the, uh, one of the things that came up in that meeting was, um, there was concern that some of the events that weren't funded were considered fundraiser events. Um, we have reviewed those applications since then, um, particularly the, the maker's market event. Um, that is not a fundraiser and I think there was just some confusion on the part of the arts commission on, on why, uh, that was actually eligible to be funded. Um, so I believe we've cleared that up now. I just wanted to get that on the record for council that, um, this is a grant that we are eligible to fund. Um, so given that, if there are any questions, I'm having to answer them, but, um, otherwise this is presented as it was presented at the study session for council adoption.
Okay, great. Did you have a question? Okay, council member look.
Yes, thank you. I do have a couple of clarifying questions. I watched that, uh, last Thursday's, um, meeting with the arts commission. It seems to me that the process was the only, that's where I have some questions on. So the original, uh, a dollar amount that the arts commission had was to award grants was thirty five thousand dollars. And then fifteen thousand was found, uh, extra. And my question is, um, is it possible in the future, if more money is found, that it goes back to the arts commission for their input as well on how to spend that additional funding?
Uh, so that is a possibility. That's a council discretion really at that point because once, once we determined we had a need for additional funding, we once we determined we had a need for additional funding, we couldn't go back to the Arts Commission until council had told us that they were willing to, uh, allocate the rest of that money. And once we were at that point, uh, we could go to council and say, here's our idea for how to allocate it. Um, so if council, if we run into the situation again, council can say, let's go back to the Arts Commission and get their input on it before moving forward. Um, we do run into a time issue, because most of these grants that we're going to fund really need to be under contract very soon, so it needed to be adopted at this meeting, um, which really kind of constrained our timeline. Uh, we did end up meeting with the Arts Commission again, but we would, that meeting didn't occur until after your packet was put out last week, so that's kind of a, uh, an example of what our timeline was like. But that, that's at council's discretion, if they wanna go back and get further recommendation.
So I'm really not interested in doing that tonight for this, for this proposal. My concern is more in the future, if something happens, and I, it seems to me that when we did the LTAC grants, and it might have been a different process, but the LTAC grants also came in with one amount, and then we found extra money, or we did, or administration decided to take more money. I, I understand that administration has that ability to do that, but if you go back to the, uh, original granting commission, it seems like would be a really good working relationship, and especially for the Arts Commission, when they put out that they had thirty-five thousand dollars, just to let all the applicants know that the thirty-five thousand was increased to fifty thousand, I think would have been a really transparent way to, um, make all the applicants understand that additional funding was found, and so that, that's my concern. It's just, uh, hopefully, hopefully it would work a little smoother, because, you know, we've had a lot of conversation about this, and for me, it was just about the process and, uh, and if we could get the Arts Commission on board, and maybe, I don't know, when, is there a particular reason that the timing for the grant awards? I mean, couldn't that happen a little earlier if we found more money and it could go back to them? Is, is that written in stone?
Uh, no, the timing is just up to administration as we have time to do things, so we definitely will be looking at that next year.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
And, um, councilmember Wook, just to, I think, and I, I mentioned this to the Arts Commission as well, I don't think we were expecting to have as many applications or requests for money, so I guess the good news here is that the public now knows about the Creative Endeavor Program, and we received a lot more requests than what the Arts Commission had to fill. And I can certainly understand that it's frustrating for the Arts Commission to do their work and know that, and really try to respect the budget that they were allotted, and so we'll, we'll work with council in future years to potentially increase that amount so that they have, if fifty thousand is an appropriate amount that we would like to go to creative endeavors, I know that they would appreciate that. And, and maybe that would be somewhere where we would come forward in budgeting and request to start there. Um, and we can definitely work out a lot of the process, um, kinks that happened this time. I, I will fully acknowledge that, um, Josh and Tiffany have been doing a lot of work, both with LTAC and communications while we're down a staff person, and that is not a, uh, an excuse, but it is, we, there were some, uh, procedural, uh, process misstep, and we've owned that. And we really, uh, value the Arts Commission, and, um, we've let them know that, and in the future, we'll look at the process and ensure that those things are wrapped up and, um, go smoother in future years.
Great, thank you. Any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, I'll open public comment on this agenda item. If you're in the audience and would like to speak, you can come forward at this time. Um, in our online audience, you can push star nine on your phone, or the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment on this agenda item, and I'll open it up for council deliberation. Councilmember Barber.
Yes, I move to authorize the mayor to execute creative endeavor grants agreements as listed.
Second.
Okay, great, we have a motion and a second. Councilmember Wook, your light is on, did you have a question? Okay, no, no problem. Making sure I didn't miss anything. Um, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you so much, council. And I, now we'll, we'll open it up now for council reports and comments. Councilmember Liggins.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I attended the Pierce County Regional Council meeting on March sixteenth, and we heard a lot about, um, housing as, um, is the hot topic these days. Um, they presented some information from the Puget Sound Regional Council, talking about the data from the Department of Congress, or Department of Commerce, excuse me, housing needs data and growth target, and how those didn't necessarily align with the growth management targets, and I'm sure there will be much robust conversation to come. Um, we also, um, I, we heard from Heather Moss with Pierce County Human Services Director about the one-tenth of one percent affordable housing tax. Um, interestingly, this is allowable when they passed the legislature, Washington, in twenty twenty, um, House Bill fifteen ninety passed to allow local jurisdictions to use this. To, in Pierce County, the only jurisdiction that has used this to use within the city has been the city of Tacoma. This was passed by the Pierce County Council on March twenty-first, you may have seen in the news. And it's interesting, this can be used for affordable housing, which usually is less than the sixty percent medium and median income, um, but also for behavioral mental health or substance abuse facilities. So, um, because Gig Harbor didn't opt into this prior, um, we would be a part of the county programs that will go around. Um, and they were seeking clarification whether if a city did want to opt into this after the county opted in, whether that would be an option. Um, just informationally for all of the cities. So it was a really interesting discussion, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Wook.
Uh, yes, thanks. Last Wednesday, I attended the KGI Watershed Council meeting. Uh, one of the issues that we've been talking about is the Lou Windsor Grant. And apparently, in years past, the, uh, city has, uh, applied for and gotten a Lou Windsor Grant, they're small grants. But I did get that, um, application and sent it on into our city administrator and some of the directors, in case there was a way to use the grant. I also forwarded the grant to the Downtown Waterfront Alliance, and thinking that it might be helpful with their promotion of the Chum Festival. Has to be used on certain, um, environmental issues there. Um, couple of other things. Last Wednesday, there was a mess on the freeway, and there was a mess all over downtown Gig Harbor with the traffic. It was really hours in the, in the making, uh, before it cleared up, and, um, the people were stuck on Pioneer for hours and hours. One of our new restaurants, David Kettlefish, came out with, uh, lemonade, and he handed lemonade out to all the drivers who were stuck in their cars. I thought that was a really kind thing for them to do, so, so that was really good thing. And then over the weekend, I attended the Kiwanis Gig Harbor Has Talent, and oh my gosh, those kids, they're young, and they started out in kindergarten, playing the piano and sang and danced, and there was an aerial artist as well, and it was a lot of fun, it's, uh, very crowded, but a lot of people had a good time, so that was the weekend in Gig Harbor.
That's great, thank you. Councilmember Rodenberg.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this last Friday, I attended the Sister Cities, uh, committee meeting, uh, Board of Directors meeting, and, uh, I wanted to give you an update on the status of that, uh, committee. Uh, the incorporation papers have been filed. Uh, we now have a bank account, and we are looking at, uh, city in Croatia called Miln, and I, Milna. And I think that Mayor Markley has been in contact, I know Mayor Markley's been in contact with the mayor there. Uh, they just had a council meeting on the twenty-third, so I'm curious to find out what happened at their council meeting. Uh, the way that it proceeds is they agree they wanna do something with us, we agree we wanna do something with them, and then we decide what that's gonna be. Uh, there was a lot of brainstorming done at this last meeting, uh, trying to find ways that we could find common areas of interest between the towns and Gig Harbor. Uh, the city in Croatia is a waterfront fishing community, similar to Gig Harbor, and we do have a lot of things in common, we're trying to find ways that we could maybe do youth exchanges, uh, either through schools, or even sports competitions with the kayak club, or the sailing club, uh, something to get the youth, uh, interested in it. Uh, things that Budha in Norway are, are going extremely well. Uh, we've had several visits with them, uh, two of the members of the committee were invited to the, uh, Norwegian Embassy in Washington DC, and they attended that, I think, three weeks ago, and, uh, that went very well, so, uh, it, it's an exciting program, and if anyone listening, or anybody in ear, earshot, knows of some way that we might be able to share experiences with business, sports, youth, education, any of those things. Uh, speaking of education, one of the things that were thought about was maybe having a two-week teacher exchange, where they could send two teachers here, uh, to teach our classes, and we could send a couple teachers there. So, uh, it's exciting, and I look forward to, next time I update you.
Thank you so much. Yes, I have not heard how the council meeting went, or what was decided, so I'm equally anticipating what the, what Mayor Lozich is going to say, and what their council had to say. Um, I know that they were interested in doing a joint meeting with their council and our council, which would be fun. I think it would be around eight in the morning, our time, that we would get online with them. So I'll let you guys know if that ends up coming to be something that they want to still do, I think that'd be fun.
Maybe we, maybe we could just meet halfway.
Right? Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be amazing? What is halfway between here and Croatia? I don't know. The ocean, we can be, we'll meet on a, on a cruise liner, how about that? It, yeah, it's long, it's very long. Um, councilmember Martin.
Thank you. I wanted to say that, uh, both councilmember Barber and myself, uh, attended a meeting with Stephanie Lee, the director of the Harbor History Museum, uh, tour. I went back on Saturday as well, but just a better understanding of what it is they're doing, uh, for the community, and just what a, a gift it is for the community, so that was really fun for us. We, uh, councilmember Barber and I, on separate times, also got the count parking spaces in the downtown area, did the annual survey, and that was also fun, and I really appreciate the Glines for doing that and leading up that charge for us, so we have good data. And then I wanted to thank councilmember Rodenberg for his contact, uh, for Terry Holm, who's the president of the Sportsman's Club. And both, uh, councilmember Rodenberg and, and Terry gave me a wonderful tour. And the reason why I wanted to go out and take that tour is I get a lot of comments about the Sportsman's Club, and I said, you know, it's not fair if I don't know the facts. And I wanna go over there and listen and see what they're doing, a lot of the good things they're doing, um, and be able to speak intelligently about what it is they are and are not, and so I really appreciated that time. And then lastly, I met with Director Batson at the Chamber of Commerce, had another very good conversation with her about what they're doing. Her hopes are for more participation in partnerships with others, and I appreciated that. And just getting to know, again, the community better, so that when I'm asked a question, I can speak as intelligently, again, as I can about things. And if not, if I don't have the answers, I can direct people where they might go to get the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought up the Sportsman's Club, I've been getting several emails recently from some new neighbors near the Sportsman's Club about their hours of operation and, um, when they're allowed to be making noise and when they're not, and so I've been replying with what our code says about when they can operate and, um, how many weekends a month and, and all of that, and so, um, feel free, I can send that. I think you, I think I've copied council, so feel free to copy all of that information and send that out as well if you do get questions. Um, but thank you for going and learning about them, because they really do some amazing things for our community, so appreciate that. Um, okay, announcement of upcoming meetings is attached to this agenda, as is our strategic plan, which we are, will be in the process of updating as we go along with, uh, study sessions, and thank you to all of our staff that were here tonight, as well as our city attorney, Daniel Kenny, thank you for joining us. Um, and if there is nothing else for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.